...available in the file pockets over by the entrance, or on the city's website. All items appearing on the consent agenda are voted on in one motion and vote. Generally, these are routine in nature and do not require discussion. All items under unfinished business or new business are voted on separately. First, councillors will be given an opportunity for questions or comments. Once all councillors have had an opportunity to speak, citizens will be given an opportunity for comments or questions. Citizens must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Each citizen will be allowed one opportunity to speak, and will be limited to three minutes. Finally, councillors will be given another opportunity to speak or comment. Citizens who would like to speak on a topic that does not appear on the next agenda will have an opportunity to do so at the end of the meeting, under the public comments section of the agenda.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, go to disclosures of conflict matters. Seeing none, move on to the manager's report.
Can you all hear?
No.
Well, something's wrong with the microphones from the, from the, uh, dais there.
We just figured.
Is it better?
That's better.
I had it off. I'm loud now.
I can hear each of you, but not hear Jay.
Can you hear me now? It's like a Verizon commercial.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Steve.
I'm getting there.
He's not talking yet.
It's because he's not talking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Verizon. They owe us money.
The downtown revitalization project is, is going well. You've probably seen a lot of paving happening along Main Street, and they're down in the Spring Street, Bridge Street area, Water Street now. They're doing a considerable amount of work, and we believe that the, the pace of the project has picked up at this stage. Moving on to the, um, next item on my list. The, the county held a meeting about a week ago that Garvin Donegan and I attended, had to do with their soliciting input on how to allocate within the county municipalities the $26 million that they've received from the federal government for COVID assistance. The primary concerns that came out of that meeting were housing, mental health support, and healthcare support. Garvin and I talked about putting together a coalition of municipalities that would involve the surrounding communities around Waterville to put in an application for a number of, of different things. One of them would be for housing. With $26 million to work with, I don't see why we, we couldn't get enough funding to build another homeless shelter, or to acquire a cooling and heating space for Waterville emergencies. And with all of the people that we find in Waterville from the surrounding communities that are in need of financial assistance and other kinds of social services, it seems to me that that type of an application, with all of us working together, has a good chance of being funded. I would like to do the same kind of thing on the mental health front, and I'm working, trying to pull together those parties that provide mental health services so that we can describe some sort of program that will help not only the, um, the general population that's been psychologically and emotionally impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic, but also the homeless that have mental health issues. There are a lot of things that we need to, to focus on, and I'm hoping that bringing a coalition together of multiple services as well as multiple communities will bring funding to help address those. There's no rush on the county's part to distribute funding, and their application process is a rolling process, so there are no deadlines. And as I've told you before, there's a three-year window in which to commit these funds, and then another two years in which they all have to be expended. What I would be proposing, working with these groups, is that we look for multi-year funding and not just one hit. So I'll keep you updated on that, and I'll look for assistance from various councillors to help me pull those groups together.
Thanks, Steve. Can I get approval of a consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Patty, can I get a roll call?
Um, I believe Councillor Green has an amendment to make to the minutes.
All right.
Oh, thank you, Patty. Yes, I do. Under my councillor updates, it should read that the Housing Committee has met twice a month since June, not twice since June, so I offer that amendment.
Second. Patty, can I get a roll call on the amendment?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
Yes.
Vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Move as amended.
Second.
Now, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to unfinished business. Ordinance 207, 2021.
Shall we entertain a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
For all items on the agenda?
All of them. Yes, please.
We're missing Eric.
I couldn't get the verbiage out of my head.
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed. Ordinance 207 dash 2021, an ordinance providing for amendment to marijuana ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Just a quick reference for the particular amendment. This is the second reading of proposed amendment to the marijuana ordinance that would reduce the 500-foot buffer around municipal safe zones to 400 feet.
Uh, I don't think we heard you, Steve.
400 feet.
My microphone was off, wasn't it?
Yeah, I think so. So you might want to say that again, just for the record.
Okay, for the benefit of those attending and those watching on TV, this is a proposed amendment in its second reading to reduce the buffer around municipal safe zones from 500 feet to 400 feet. If adopted tonight, it will take effect 21 days from now.
Anyone on TV have anything to say? Go ahead, Claude.
I, uh, as I said last week, I think it's, uh, wrong for us to, uh, be tinkering with our rules, uh, just, uh, for one particular, uh, person or business. And, uh, considering, uh, the work that the Marijuana Committee went in to preparing this ordinance, uh, and the fact that it's been working extremely well since we did pass it, I, uh, continue to oppose amending, uh, the marijuana ordinance.
Thank you, Claude. Anyone else? Councillor Green.
Yeah, I, I, I can appreciate Councillor Frankie's point of view, and I really shared it, um, up until a day or so ago, but I think, um, there's no great solution here. I don't think it's a good idea to tinker with ordinances for the sake of an individual request. However, in this case, the individual is, um, in an unfortunate situation that the city is partly responsible for, so I'm, um, I'm gonna vote in favor, um, on the grounds that the harm to this individual is greater than the apparent, um, harm to, um, amending this ordinance with respect to the mid-main homeless shelter. So, as I said, not a, not a great choice here, but, um, I think I, um, I have to go with, uh, amending the ordinance in this case.
Thank you, Councillor Green. Anyone else? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Hold on. You can't, sir. Let me set your timer.
Thank you. My name is Michael Talbot, resident of Lantilane in Waterville, which is W5. I've been a lifelong resident of Waterville.
Could you put the microphone?
Lifelong resident of Waterville. I've been on this council in the past, so I know it's, uh, the council's position of wanting to attract business to the city of Waterville. But we have to be consistent in our making of ordinances or any rulings, so that we paint a positive picture for outsiders as far as how we do business in Waterville. If we're changing things on a whim, uh, this ordinance has, uh, went into effect sometime this spring, but, and then when it's, uh, for one individual, one entity versus what's in the best interest of the entire city of Waterville, and I'd put forth, the best interest of Waterville is to have a safe zone for youngsters with at least 500 feet, okay? That's a rule of thumb that the state of Maine uses in some of its buffer zones, where they're at 1,000 feet and they give the, the city the opportunity to, to, uh, reduce it to 500. And, uh, the, the council must have had good reason why it wanted to have a safe zone, and if you can have a safe zone, you should have these children protected, and if, if this was a state issue, it'd be at the minimum of 500 feet. Um, there are other issues here is that, uh, what if now somebody comes in and wants a, a waiver to 300 feet? You're gonna be changing it again, and you've got different, uh, footage for the other things that are listed in that marijuana thing. And if you're just changing it because of one person, I think that's poor, uh, you know, planning, poor, uh, rule by, by the council as far as going forward in establishing why Waterville is a good place to do business. And other issues that should be brought up that I haven't seen in the, the ordinance is emissions. Has this entity cleared all of the hurdles that the state of Maine would want? Because we're talking about a processing facility versus everything that we see is retail, but clearly on the sign, it's, it's processing. If there are hazardous materials there, the state has to give its blessing before a license should be issued, so hopefully all those things have been taken into consideration. And finally, the residents in that area have not been given adequate notice as far as this zoning issue, and that should be resolved in the, in the future.
So I, I would like to point out that part of what you said goes both ways. We, as a city, we told this company that they were good to go if they got this building. And then we enacted a safe zone to help the homeless shelter, who to this day has also said that they are okay with it not being there because they don't want to block. I think blocking a business that is legal, that got some assurances from the city that that was going to be an okay spot, and then we as a city changed the rule in between the process, I think that shows that we're not business friendly. Um, and this isn't about one person. This is a mistake that the city made that the city has to correct. Um, and they don't have to. I mean, they'll, they'll vote on it here in a second, but are, did you get all of your licensing from the state that you're gonna need?
Yeah, the state's waiting on the city of Waterville to say okay. It's up to you guys to say okay. And we're not processing here. That's why I'm talking about processing. There's no processing done. Just so you know that.
What will you be doing?
What's that?
What will you be doing?
We're retail. That's it. Just a retail shop, just like everything else. And in regards to, like you said, passing all the orders.
I'm gonna have to get you to go up there, sir. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Please. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I, I would just question if he's doing retailing, why his sign says a processing facility?
I think I'll give you an answer.
The processing isn't done there. That's not the processing. So there's another company who had that, does processing. And honestly, if it's a problem with the sign, the sign can go down. It won't be on a permanent sign, that's just a temporary banner. Um, I can answer a couple of quick questions. One's, like you said, back in March, I went to the city, through all the due process, to the code officer, said okay. He told me it was okay after numerous buildings he said wasn't. Then in the meantime, within two or three months, they passed the municipal safe zone, which I understand is the first municipal safe zone. The state does not require any, anything from playgrounds. Those playgrounds are what the city deemed. The state doesn't have any rule there, so there is no state mandatory 1,000 feet from, from playground. That's only for public schools. So you can call the state up, they'll tell you the same thing. It's not even churches. Um, so that's all I have to say. I mean, we, we just went through the right process, the city changed the thing, and I understand that it, it would be different at the homeless shelter, the lady had an issue, but she has no issue. She explained what her thing was. She doesn't want any illegal activity there, not legalized business. Um, yeah, we're not looking to cause any trouble to the community. If anybody has any questions about what we're doing, we're nothing but a medical retail store, store, just like the other six up the road.
You guys do congregate together like gas stations. It's pretty cool.
Because if you look at your map, there's not very many places you can put them. Um, I think I brought like four or five to the code officer in the right zoning, but they were too close to a playground, too close to this, too close to that, you know? So we, it wasn't like we didn't follow the previous directive, gentlemen. We made sure it was approved with an email from the code officer before we enacted the lease. I didn't go there and do it and then say, hey, Waterville, please do this. I went to the city clerk, who pointed me to the city code person, who then sent me all these things in motions, which brought me to you people.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
No.
The vote is five in favor and one opposed.
All right. Moving on to Resolution 185, 2021.
A resolution providing for authorizing issuance of a marijuana retail license to Frank Berini doing business as Marijuanaville.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, I believe that, uh, the council chair was recommending an amendment to this resolution to state that the license would be issued 21 days from today, because that is when the ordinance amendment will go into effect. And that way he would, that way the applicant at 68 College Avenue won't have to wait for another council meeting and for the council to vote yet again to say, yes, we'll issue you a license. You, you, it is legal for you to amend this resolution to state the license will be issued 21 days from today.
I'll offer that as an amendment.
Second.
Patty, can I get a roll call on that amendment?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yeah.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
No.
The vote is five in favor and one opposed.
Move as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
No.
The vote is five in favor and one opposed.
Welcome to Waterville. All right, moving on to Ordinance 208, 2021.
An ordinance providing for amendment to zoning.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Patty, can, oh, go ahead, Claude.
Which, uh, what are we amending here?
West River Road, the shack over by the, the junior high, am I correct?
Yes.
Yep, the shack over by the junior high, Claude.
Yeah, okay.
All right, uh, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Bill.
Oh, Bill. Oh, go ahead, Bill.
And Green.
I see you're here.
Yeah, isn't this the amendment to rezone the property so that the junior high can, uh, build a storage building?
Yes.
Okay, just to be clear, that's what's happening.
Councillor Green?
I was just trying to get your attention, because Bill had a comment.
Oh. Hmm. Nobody else? Uh, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Okay, moving on to Ordinance 209, 2021.
An ordinance providing for amendment to the zoning ordinance.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Trying to look at the TV. Go ahead, Claude.
If this is to, uh, add solar farms as a possible thing out on the airport zoning, is that correct?
That is correct, Claude. Anyone else? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Hey, moving on to Resolution 217, 2021.
A resolution providing for issuance of an innkeeper's license to VMP Hospitality LLC doing business as the Elmwood.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Patty, can I get a roll call?
Councillor Morris?
Yes.
Councillor De Brito?
Yes.
Councillor Klepak?
Yes.
Councillor Green?
Yes.
Councillor Foss?
Yes.
Councillor Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 218, 2021.
A resolution providing for establishment of Nordic ski rates for the 2021-2022 season.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Go ahead, Steve.
For the benefit of all here and watching, this is a proposal coming through the Recreation Department to increase the rates, uh, for the Nordics, uh, ski, use of the Nordic ski trails at the Quarry Road Trails. Recreation Director Skane is here tonight, if anyone wants some, uh, further background on this. this.
Seeing none, Patty, can I get a roll call? Oh, sorry, Claude. Go ahead, Claude.
I would, I would like to offer an amendment to this, to keep the rate the same for youth and students and for families. The same as we did for the pool this summer. I think this is the kind of thing that we need to do to give people a break after the, as we start to wind out of the pandemic, if we wind out of the pandemic.
Counsel?
Is that a motion, or?
That's a, that's a motion, yes.
Do we have a second? Counsel Green?
Could I just, could you repeat that, Claude? What was the amendment?
Yes, just to. Go ahead.
Just, yeah, just if you could repeat which categories you want to keep the same.
The youth, the youth fees and the family fees.
For residents or residency and non-residents, Counselor?
Well, I offered it in general, but I'd be happy if they could limit it just to residents.
I'll second that.
I'm a second. I gotta take the roll call on the amendment first.
So there is a second. So I just want to clarify before we go on.
Can we have a discussion before a roll call on that, then?
Yep, go ahead, Klepak.
And so, to be clear, this is for the day pass or the season pass or both? What are you suggesting here?
I'm suggesting for both. I mean, it just seems that if we're going to do something nice for the kids in Waterville, that we ought to do it for their, do it for them. A day pass and as the, for the season pass, I don't see the distinction there.
Okay, well, then, in that case, I would like to hear from Matt Skane as to his rationale behind this and what would be the potential economic input. Why is this being implemented this season rather than, as you suggest, wait a season? And what will this mean in terms of programming and the rest? Can we get Matt to talk on this issue now?
I'll let Matt talk here in a second, but I'm gonna go to Rick for, before we go to Matt.
Counsel Frankie, are we talking about the 2021, 21-22 season? And I only reason, the only reason I bring that up is the current rates have been in effect since 1617. So if we limit this to 21-22 season, they would go up for the 22-23 season.
Oh, sure. Yeah, that's.
We can add that, you want to add that to the amendment?
Sure, you can, we can add that to the amendment, just for this year.
Is that good enough for you, Patty?
I have it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Matt.
Right, just a couple notes. Everyone can hear me okay, I'm assuming? Yeah. So Counselor Klepak, I can't tell you what this will do for programming or usage. I assume that it won't affect that too much because we still offer a great value. A couple of notes that even with the proposed rates, Waterville residents pay half the statewide average for most day and season passes, and the most affordable adult season pass in the state for Waterville residents, even with the proposed increase. And like you folks had mentioned before, that it has been since 1617. We did market analysis, the Friends of Quarry Road Marketing Committee comparing all the other like facilities, and they feel these rates are fair and that they're timed to be implemented. They've been, they've been very low for quite some time, and we're trying to build our market, and we still feel that, we feel that they're fair.
I appreciate that, because when we had a meeting about it the other day, I asked why they weren't higher. Any further discussion on Claude's amendment? Go ahead, Counsel Klepak. Oh, Counsel Green, I saw Counsel Green. Her hands like blending in with the color behind her.
Need my green glove again.
Yes.
I'm just wondering if there is any scholarship opportunity for folks at this facility like there is at the pool?
Yep, there are for Waterville residents, just exactly the same that we do for the pool. Also, I didn't mention that we do offer, typically offer three to four communities' free ski days each winter, obviously. Free rentals, free passes for families, and a free lesson. So I think we've got things pretty well covered, I think.
Klepak?
Thank you.
Well, my first observation here is I'm wondering, you know, having this, I do know what an exceptional value this is, and I do, I've also seen firsthand how the city does a good job, and the Friends of Quarry Road does a great job of getting people that may not be able to afford to get access to a sport like cross-country skiing. They get those kids on skis one way or the other, if they have the interest. And so, you know, if raising the day pass for a family of four enables us, for families that can afford it, to be able to create a better buffer or bring more students in, more children and families in that may not be able to afford it, then I am 100% in favor of the rate increase. Although sympathetic to Claude's perspective, I, I do see the need to be able to have people who can afford to pay more in what is already an excellent bargain for them, to be able to facilitate access for those who can't. That's my first observation on this. And then, secondly, I just want, I kind of have a question for Bill Lee. This maybe is a bit of an embarrassing question for me, but I'm, I volunteer for the Friends of Quarry Road, and my family gets one of these passes. That doesn't put me at a conflict of interest to vote on this, does it?
No. You're sharing in activities that anybody and everybody in the community shares in.
Okay.
If that conflicted you out, you, there would be very little, very little people could vote on.
Yeah, okay.
Sure.
And since you want to pay more, I don't think there's a conflict. Anyone else?
Well, I think he misunderstood, I think he misunderstood, Jay. He said it's a conflict because he gets a free pass because he volunteers.
No, that is not correct. That's not what I'm saying.
He's not volunteering to pay more. He's not volunteering to pay, you're not volunteering to pay more, Tom. You're volunteering because you volunteer.
I'm not quite sure what you're saying, Claude, but I don't get a free pass or anything by volunteering. I certainly pay my family pass. I volunteer.
Pay your family pass? Okay, well, I misunderstood what you said then. I thought, so anyway, that's great.
I volunteer because the program is excellent, and I want to help it.
My only suggestion, the reason I put the amendment out, is to give Waterville residents a break, the same way we did with the pool. But if the council thinks that they, that raising the rates for Waterville residents is great, why, that's the way they'll vote.
Well, can we have Matt speak to my question as to whether raising the rates for those who can afford to pay that is going to enable greater access for those who can't or not? Am I misunderstanding the economics of that? Because I don't really, I'm not very familiar with that side of things at Quarry Road.
Right, Counselor. You know, the more money that we make, the more money we'll have to, you know, apply scholarships for folks who need it.
Thank you, Matt. I'm gonna give.
Well, that begs the question, Matt, then, does Quarry Road make enough money that the Parks and Recreation Department doesn't require money from the city? I don't think so. We're still supporting the Parks and Recreation Department.
I hope so. There are parks.
I think, if I can on that.
Go ahead.
Does Quarry Road pay for itself?
It does.
Thank you.
Matt, thanks. I'm gonna let Paula Raymond up.
No, I don't need to get, I just was curious as to the cost that it was, what it is now, what the difference is.
It's, right, it's on the memo. There's so many categories, it'll be a little convoluted and complicated. You know, there's several different categories for non-residents and residents and day passes and whatnot. So expenses over revenues last year was approximately $30,000. So we did, we had a good year at Quarry Road, even with COVID. You know, it's an outdoor activity, so we're hopeful that we have another great season.
Thank you, Matt. Patty, can I get a roll call on that amendment?
On the amendment?
Yes.
Counsel Morris?
No.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
No.
Counsel Green?
Um, I'm, no, for me.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
It's three to three. Mayor Coelho?
So that's a no.
A no from you?
Yeah.
No, a three to three is a tie, and you break the tie.
So we're gonna, so I'm saying no to the amendment.
Okay, so three to four. The motion fails.
Now we move on to the original.
Correct.
Any further discussion there? Go ahead, Claude.
If I vote no on this one, the rates remain the same for everybody?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel Green?
I don't have a question.
Oh, all right. Can I get a roll call, Patty?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
No.
Counsel Klepak?
By saying yes here, I'm agreeing to the rate increases.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
No.
The vote is four in favor and two opposed.
All right. Moving on to Order 219, 2021.
An order providing for authorization to accept and spend grant funds.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Frankie?
Which grade is this?
Steve? Do you have an answer for Claude?
Matt, who's the answer to that?
Oh, let's go, Matt. Back up there.
You're getting your steps in.
I told you you could sit, but I lied.
We'll get you a chair back there.
So it's a grant from the Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry for tree planting here in the city?
How many trees are we getting, Matt?
16 trees, four locations. It's gonna be matched 50/50, and we've got the match with in-kind labor and equipment.
Any other questions?
And where, what are the locations that the trees are going in, Matt?
Right, Counselor. The Riverwalk, Purnell Field, Grove Street Park, and the Moore Street Playground. All for shade.
Any other questions? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Resolution 2021, 2021.
A resolution providing for appointing members to the ARPA committee.
Move to adopt?
Any discussion? Claude, go ahead.
Would you be good enough to read the names of the people, and are any of them in attendance at the meeting tonight?
I can.
Yep.
Bruce, I'm sorry, Bruce White, Bill Mitchell, Suzanne Walsh, Elizabeth Barron, Rebecca Green, Jay Coelho, Mike Roy, Jennifer Johnson.
And, go ahead.
And, do I do a motion?
You're gonna make a motion to amend.
Okay, so I'm gonna do a motion to amend. And I'm gonna add Colleen Madigan, and Deborah Tooth.
No, Dolores.
Oh, Dolores.
Toothacre.
Toothacre.
Dolores Toothacre.
Yes.
Resident, Ward 7. Impacted, like you said.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? Go ahead, Counsel Green.
So, when we spoke, Jay, I was under the impression that this is the beginning of a roster.
That is correct.
Of, I do think that this, this group, while, you know, a lot of wonderful people on there, I'll include myself in that.
I hope so.
It's, it doesn't really satisfy the diversity that we were looking for. So I'd really like to see that, you know, we talked about having a student. It would be nice to have some, some folks who are, you know, from different wards. Most of the people are from Ward 4. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I also would like to see Garvin Donigan or someone from the Central Maine Growth Council on this committee, because I think we need that kind of expertise. So I don't know how this works in terms of technicalities, but I guess I can, we could vote on this amendment, and I could make another amendment, but that's my feeling on the, on the committee, is it?
I agree with you. I have a meeting with Katie on Thursday morning. I've already reached some of the people out at the schools, so I'm just waiting for those people to get back, and I hope Garvin absolutely jumps on this.
Okay.
But like I said, this is a list to get us started, and then by next meeting, you should have two or three more names that you can vote in.
And what is, what's the maximum number that we're shooting for?
What do we have right now? It's technically unspecified, but I'm trying to keep it under a dozen. 10 to 12.
With the amendment, we have 10.
Yeah, we have 10. So it gives you space for two more people. Or an extra if you decide to vote on it. Claude?
I just, I wondered where you were procedurally. Have you set a date for an initial meeting? So you want to get the ball rolling? I just wondered if you've got a meeting for, to get the ball rolling.
So we don't. I'd like to get us one, but I needed to figure out who our members were going to be. I didn't want to have a meeting where Rebecca and I were the only ones showing up. Anyone else? Paula?
I'm becoming a pest in there.
It's okay, but you gotta go up there to speak.
Oh, I don't like that part.
Sorry.
Don't worry, we don't bite.
He can't speak, Paula.
All right, Paula Raymond from Ward 7. And my concern is always about the educational piece, and usually in these committees, it has to be brought up separately because it doesn't seem to be a bill here.
Speaking of the microphone.
And so, one of the aspects that Bill Mitchell actually said in his list that he gave the week that people came and submitted what their ideas were, was adult education. And so that's something I'd like to see represented in this particular committee.
Thank you.
It's that simple.
Mayor Coelho, could you repeat that? Because I didn't hear exactly.
Repeat what?
The nuance of what Paula said.
That she would like somebody from adult ed to get on the committee.
Education overall, but adult ed is what he had mentioned.
So we've reached out, because we're trying to get one of the students. So we've reached out, because we're trying to get one of the students.
Okay, thank you.
I would be an educator, that would be important to have on.
Anyway.
She just said she wants to be on it?
She just says she wants to be on it.
Put her on.
Add it to your amendment.
Mm-hmm. Paula, what's her last name?
We're gonna add Paula, too.
Yeah.
Paula Raymond.
Yeah.
See how easy that was?
See? Rick was like, done. So those three? Anybody else? Patty, can I get a roll call on the amendment?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel De Britto?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yeah.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Move as amended?
Second.
Any other discussion? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel De Britto?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
Moving on to Order 221, 2021.
An order providing for authorization to accept and spend federal funding from the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA Local Fiscal Recovery Program.
Move to adopt?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mike does not have my back tonight.
He wasn't even paying attention. All right, Patty. Oh, go ahead, Steve.
Just quickly, for the benefit of everyone. The state has pushed money in Waterville's direction to the tune of 50% of the $1.7 million that's the allocation under the ARPA program for the city. It's coming into the Waterville accounts and will be dispersed later on by the council based on the decisions it makes. The other half of the money is, as I understand it, is going to be coming as we develop programs.
Anyone else? Patty, can I get a roll call?
Counsel Morris?
Yes.
Counsel De Britto?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Foss?
Yes.
Counsel Frankie?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor and zero opposed.
All right, moving on to presentation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May we have a five-minute recess so that we can get everything set up properly and make sure it works?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor.
I have a microphone, so I had to get loud and I'm suffering the consequences a little bit today, so please bear with me. This is our presentation regarding the proposed improvements that we're putting forward to the council to consider for North Street and Pine Ridge Recreation Areas. And even though it's not noted there, this includes the Green Street Park. The North Street Recreation Area originally donated to the city in the 1920s by a local philanthropist, George Avril, was originally named Avril Park. Since then, it has undergone many use, physical, and name changes. Today, we refer to the space as the North Street Recreation Area, or North Street for short. While there are several other recreation areas throughout the city, North Street has become the focal point of recreation for Waterville with the Alphonde Youth and Community Center, a lighted basketball court, popular tennis courts, a children's playground, gathering pavilions, and green space that serves as home to the Waterville Youth Soccer Association. All of that began to change when late in 2021, the city granted a lease to the Alphonde Youth Center to locate an ice arena on the property. As the arena began, plans began to take shape, several issues surfaced that got city staff and the council's recreation committee thinking about the location of the arena and the adjacent uses. First... Moving on. First, the location was in a hollow that is a seasonally wet area which would be a less-than-ideal underpinning for the building. Second, the construction of the building would require removal of several large and picturesque pine trees that stand as somewhat of a signature on the property. Third, an existing gravel path that leads from North Street to the river would be lost. And fourth, parking for the arena would need to spill out into the nearby neighborhood streets to accommodate the number of cars anticipated based on the capacity of the The first ring that you see there, the shaded red, is the zoning radius that would not accommodate the attendance at the arena. The second ring that came out, as you can see, encroaches significantly farther into the adjoining neighborhoods, and that was a proposal to expand that radius that, that didn't go beyond considering presenting it to the planning board. The arena group from the Alphonde Youth Center withdrew that proposal, seeing that it was going to have significant resistance. In response to these issues, the city staff took a look at alternate locations on the North Street property. It soon became apparent that there are a number of maintenance needs and improvements begging to be addressed among the adjoining city facilities. The children's playground is 20 years old and in need of replacement play features. The pavilions are old as well, and despite the city's efforts to maintain them, have reached their useful lives. And the tennis courts and basketball court all need resurfacing. At first, we considered moving the arena to the high ground next to the original location. That proved to be unachievable since the federal grant that helped pay for the playground contained terms that prohibited its relocation. So then we moved the footprint up onto the higher ground. That's farther north on the property, over to your left, and immediately realized that there isn't enough room for it there. As you can see, the lower-left corner encroaches across the riverside trail and almost into That led us to today's location, which is parallel to North Street and farther to the north on the property. And this is what the site looks like based on the site plan that, that we have developed. It includes new playground equipment in the current location, resurfaced tennis courts with two new courts and striping for pickleball, which I'm told is a very popular game now, a new pavilion with lighting, three-season restrooms, 186 onsite and adjacent parking spaces, and two acres of open green space as a park and free-form play area. The cost to accomplish this is $660,000. All costs related to the arena and its required amenities such as parking will be paid for by the arena group. The cost of parking areas used by both the city and the arena will be shared. Let's talk about what happens to the youth soccer since they're not located at North Street in the plan that we just showed you. This is our proposed layout of the Pine Ridge Recreation Area. The only thing that's there now is the softball field and some soccer space to the far-left of the image that you're looking at, and a parking lot that is unpaved and disorganized, and a very large dog park, which is at the bottom-right corner of the property as you're looking at it. What will come from this plan is one, two, three, four, five, six soccer fields. These are youth soccer fields. They're a little bit different dimensions for different age groups. Also, improvements to the softball field.
Steve, point of clarification. Field number six, you've got the squiggly line. I'm assuming that's tree line that we're going to have to remove?
Yes.
Okay. Big trees?
Yeah, it's trees, not water.
Okay. Thank you.
Playground with a shade structure or a pavilion on it, restrooms, concession stands, and other amenities in these three buildings you see there, and a parking lot that will accommodate 135?
I guess it was 250.
Almost 150 cars. One of the things that has come up since we put this plan together is access from Louise Avenue, which you can see Norman Avenue there shooting off to the northwest, northeast, rather. Louise Avenue is pretty much parallels that diagonal edge of this drawing. We've been asked to look at other alternatives for accessing the property, in particular to come in from the golf course parking lot, which is to the lower-left of the screen that you're looking at, and we will look at that. And the cost for all of this, we're proposing to do in two phases. The first phase would be all of the earthwork that needs to be done, creating the soccer fields, putting in the irrigation, and the parking lot, and then coming after with Phase Two, which would be the buildings that we talked about, the playground, and improvements to the softball field. Then finally, we go to the Green Street Park, and in that park, we propose to put a pavilion and a child's playground, which will be of the same quality and character of that that is going to replace what's currently at the North Street Recreation Area. One of the things that we want to do as we put together a longer-range plan for recreational facilities in the city is make sure that the quality of what we do is standardized across the city, so that we're treating all neighborhoods the same, and that we're giving the benefit of what we can afford to do to all of the children and all of the adults who choose recreation outdoors throughout the city. The cost of this Green Street Park improvement is $95. Yeah, $95.
Sign us out.
$95,000.
For $95, Rick's signing the check.
It's easier when you drop the zeros. So, end of the presentation, but before I close, I know that you're asking, how will we pay for this? And will I see it on my tax bill? The answer to that is that we intend to use TIF proceeds from our tax increment financing districts that we have in the city to achieve this under the heading of economic development. Our belief is that if we build these facilities, that we're going to draw more use of them. We're going to draw more people from around the region into Waterville to use these facilities. That includes both the ice arena and the soccer complex that we're talking about out on Pine Ridge, and we believe have a measurable economic development impact. We will bond the cost of these projects. The debt service on them will be in the range of $200,000 a year, and that's a fraction of the TIF proceeds that we collect from year to year. In closing, I'd like to thank the Alphonde Youth and Community Center, their arena group who has traveled this path with us and been extremely collaborative. They've spent a lot of money on their side of the project, a lot of which they're going to be leaving behind in the original location, and they are in support of the location that we're proposing. We also want to thank the leaders of the Waterville Youth Soccer Association, who saw the promise of this plan and have embraced it. Now, working with the council, its recreation committee, and its finance committee, we hope to bring the entire proposal to reality within the next 24 months. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions you have. And if I don't have the answers, Matt does.
Just going to put this out in front, folks. It's a breakdown of costs for each of the recreation areas. So, and yeah, I mean, I guess if there are questions, that's great. We're, you know, we'll try to answer them, but there is, there are...
You can get a mic.
Maybe when we get through the question and answer, if there are leaders from the community groups that we mentioned before, we'd love to hear from them.
Mr. Daley, the number I come up with is 1.949 million dollars. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. We went from a project that, and I understand that everybody's on board, but I want to make a point here. This project started out when I was on council last year, and five trees, which, according to the map, we're now going to cut, we're going to cut down some more trees. This project went from almost zero dollars costing us to 1.9 million dollars.
That's correct. And there's a good reason for that.
I'm just saying, we went from zero, almost zero, on a 99-year lease with a $1, if I remember right, it was $1 per year, to 1.9 million dollars. That's, I'll leave it, I'll leave it right there. Bye. Thank you for the info.
You're welcome.
Matt?
And I've talked about this a couple of times. What are we going to do about the dog park?
Yeah, there's a couple of areas around town, Mayor, that we've identified as being possible good places for the dog park. We've got an active dog park group. I don't see anyone here tonight, but as we move forward, it's a little preliminary because this is all, this, these are just discussion points. So, once we're able, hopefully, to nail down a plan for these two areas, we'll get with the dog park folks and take a look around, take another look around town. We do have some areas that I think would work well.
What can we do about the skate park in Green Street?
The what?
The skate park.
Skate park, yeah. Well, I think that, you know, again, we've got representatives from the Friends of Green Street Park here. They have worked so hard at buying trees, benches, fitness equipment for both adults and children. We have plans for a skate park that would fit nicely there. It's actually more of a BMX skate park hybrid.
Yep.
So, you know, because biking is especially popular down in the South End, what can we do? We can raise, we can somehow raise funds for that park as well. But I think this, this plan is a good place to start, and it does address the needs of the playground, because if you've been down to Green Street Playground, you know that that playground is...
Do we still consider that a playground?
Well, it's in rough shape.
Can we use any of the equipment that's at North Street at any of the other area parks?
Yes, I think so. And I think that we, well, we've identified the, yeah, Grove Street Playground as being a playground that can, needs to completely come out, and I think there are some salvageable pieces of equipment at North Street that could be used there.
Thank you. Anyone else with questions? I'm going to give, I'm going to give counselors an opportunity first, and I'll let you on. Any counselors? All right. Seeing none, go ahead, sir. You can step up to the podium, please.
I just have a question for Steve. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So because the money to pay for the debt service on this bond that's being proposed will come from TIF money, that's not going to affect residential tax bills?
Correct.
Thanks.
Everybody hear that answer? He's correct. It will not hit the residential tax bills.
Go ahead, sir. I'll get to you, Claude, I'm sorry.
You want to take that?
Good.
Thank you. It's okay. It's all right there. Okay. All right, thank you. Great presentation. Really amazing opportunity for youth sports in the area. My name's Jesse Wexler. I'm president of the Waterville Youth Soccer Association. We're a volunteer nonprofit group. I've got an amazing board of 15 amazing soccer moms and dads that come together to run the Waterville Youth Soccer Program. Annually, we run about 700 kids through the program. We do spring rec soccer, we do spring travel soccer, we do fall rec soccer, and fall travel soccer. I've personally been involved as a coach and board member for 12 years, so this, this, of course, to me, is an amazing opportunity for our, our young athletes. We've got a great collaborative relationship with the city of Waterville. We've had for the last several years. We could not run this program without the city of Waterville. The, the line painting and, and the lawn mowing is, is an integral component of the program, and so for, working with Matt over the years has been phenomenal. Our existing facilities are in rough shape. They, in spite of the city's efforts and our efforts to improve them over time, they are poorly drained. Parking is, is a challenge. There are unsafe and unsanitary conditions at both Pine Ridge and North Street. North Street is a, is a beautiful facility. We love the location, but it is small, it's tight, there's a lot of traffic, and so the consolidation of our soccer program to this, to Pine Ridge would be a definite benefit to, to youth, to young, to young athletes in the area. We, we service families from throughout the greater Waterville area, Oakland, Belgrade, Sydney, China, Vassaburrow, Winslow, but of course, the heart of our program is here in Waterville. There are many, many benefits to the proposal, including improved facilities, actual bathrooms, parking, and traffic flow, and, and this will also, we are central, centrally located. We are in a perfect location to draw teams, parents, families from as far as Acadia here to Waterville, from Portland here to Waterville. Many of our soccer programs are looking to host events here. We have hosted events annually in the past, drawing up to 75 teams, a thousand people over a weekend, and with a, with a state-of-the-art facility like this, I could only see that improving. So, thank you to you both and to the council for listening to this presentation. We're always looking for coaches, too, if anyone, just, guys, Steve, I mean, you know...
It is football, Steve, if you're...
I think it's safe to say, I've got several of my board here. I think it's safe to say that our program here in Waterville, which is one of the biggest recreational programs in the area, is supportive of this. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming up. Counselor Kleepack and then Counselor Frankie.
No, let Claude go first. I'm, I don't have a question. I just was going to chime in some support, supporting thoughts.
Counselor Frankie?
Well, I think improving recreational facilities is a wonderful thing for the city to do. Firmly in favor of anything that can help the young people. I would like to point out, however, that tax increment financing, funding is still tax funding. Tax increment financing district is a special district where the property taxes are sequestered for specific things, such as housing or economic development, but there still are taxes, and they are part of the annual budget. So, let's keep it clear that TIF money is not magic money that comes out of nowhere. It comes out of the taxpayers' pockets of the residents of Waterville.
Yeah, it's not actually residential taxes, though. Those are not residential taxes.
That's correct.
Anyone else? Go ahead, you'll have to go up to the podium.
I'm not opposed to the podium. I'm Ryan Finch. I'm with Friends of Green Street Park, and just to elaborate on what Matt had said, we have spent the last, we're just going to round it to two years, raising around $30,000 for the park, and so you'll note that that includes the entire pandemic. And installation began this week on eight new pieces of children's exercise equipment, and we have five adult pieces, exercise equipment coming along with some, I think, is it three or four benches? It's three or four benches? Three? Three? Three benches going into the park, and so this has been kind of a very collaborative thing. We've, working with Matt and Parks and Rec has really been great, and we are just pleased as punch that we were included in this and that we can bring a brand-new playground to Green Street Park. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, come on up, ma'am.
I'm Bets Brown, and I'm a pickleball player, and we have had, watched pickleball grow to be one of the fastest-growing sports now in the United States, and we definitely, we were just delighted to see these pickleball, two, these new courts that are in the proposal because we need that space and we need, we need it regularly. There are more people coming, literally, we have someone new almost every day that we play, so we support this proposal.
Go ahead.
Yep.
Good evening. My name is Eric Netto. I am a board member for the AYCC. I'm also a board member for Central Maine Youth Hockey, and I just wanted to make a couple of comments about this process. Actually, it's been going on for, what, three years? Two years? The AYCC was approached by a very generous donor, wanted to support an ice rink. So we started the process of, of looking into that, and that's where we landed on that original space, and we were pretty deliberate in our approach. We worked with the city to secure the lease, so we were very appreciative of that. We worked with Colby to secure equipment that we were going to repurpose into the facility. And I think, you know, when we, when we started looking at the location and those conversations with Matt and the city were taking place, I think it was a blessing in disguise that that area was, was going to be a little challenging from a construction perspective, because I think what it did was it really opened up the conversation around recreation on North Street, but in the city as a whole. So now, with the proposed location, it's not just going to benefit, you know, public skating, Central Maine Youth Hockey, and the community use, it's also going to benefit youth soccer kids and create more opportunity within the city. This project for the AYCC has always been a mission-based project, right? We wanted to support this rink, this community rink, to give our kids an opportunity to skate, but also get the community more access to a facility and re-implement the public skating, which has been missing from this area for a long time. So, I'm really happy that you guys did a great job on the presentation, and a lot of work's gone into this. We've raised almost $3 million between in-kind and donations for this, for the rink project, so I think there's a lot of support for this in the area, but I'm really glad to see that it's not just an ice arena, right? This is a citywide project now that I think is going to benefit a lot more kids, and really, I think that's the most important thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Jim Beegan, Watt Five. Obviously, I'm a tennis player, and it's, we have four issues with the tennis right now. One is the safety, what Jesse talked about, the area floods every time we get a little bit of rain. The facility is over 40 years old. The fences are so rusted that they snap and they have shot points out. The poles come out of the ground, they have to readjust the top. Poxerack has to come down every year to pound the post back in. It rains, and guess what happens? They come back up again, especially when it's down. We really need at least to fix the fences, and that's 40 grand, right there alone for a safety purpose. We also, the redesigning of the area will allow, where we have a lot of wetness, will become parking, right in front of the tennis courts. So instead of having a diagonal and all stuff there, walk through the mud and all stuff there, we're going to relocate the sitting on the other side so that we can have additional parking onsite. The biggest problem that I have right now... The biggest problem that I have right now is that, I used to, I was a coach at Waterville, Colby, and now Thomas. We used to be able to use the Colby facilities. That's no longer a case. I've been running a community program for about 20 years, and we get anywhere from 100 people, above 100 people a week, going up to Colby to play free scrambles, adults, youngs, and all stuff there. So that freed up the four courts on North Street to be able to do the youth stuff. We can't do that anymore. We average right now about 160 people using courts on a weekly basis. Mostly, it's gonna be mornings and late afternoons. So that gives me, gives me and the Central Maine Tennis Association with Devon, and we've got the boys that were there that run that, no opportunities to continue our youth programs. We've gone from this area, Waterville used to have 40 people playing tennis, kids playing tennis, now it's less than 20. There are no programs at Masulonski, Lawrence, and Winslow, basically. The boys barely get three, four kids. Before that, we used, this area had hundreds of kids playing tennis because they decided when they're young and they enjoyed the sport. It's a lifelong sport, guys. I mean, it isn't something that the kids are gonna play football and then that's it. I'm nearly 80 years old, okay? My biggest thrill is when I go up to the courts, I see kids that were on my tennis team, playing with their partners or their spouses, with their kids, their grandchildren, and their great-grandchildren, that's how long I get around, okay? But they out there, they're playing, they're fun. The location that we have now is great because of the Alphon Center, pools, and the playground. I go there at lunchtime, and I have the tennis ball, tennis rocks and all stuff there. So kids, after they've swung, swimming, they come over and they just hit the ball around. Pickleball was just brought up. The second court, the two courts that we put in there, will allow us to have four pickleball courts, and then the other four courts we have, we can take those down. So we'll end up with 12 pickleball courts. They can really have a great tournament there, that can really be good. My biggest problem right now is that I'm seeing kids not doing anything, just sitting down and not doing anything. And I want them to be able to feel, have good exposure to the sport, other people, be able to have self-confidence, build up their esteem, and have fun. That's the most important thing that I have right now. It's a life, it's a life-giving sport, it really is. Economically, the other one is that if we have these four courts, the Maine Principal Association, IPA, the NCAA, high school, they all want to come back to Waterville, Maine, as Jesse mentioned. This is a central area for sports. Right now, people from Carrollwood have to go all the way down to Lewiston to play. They wanna, the NPA wants to return back here so we can have regional tournaments, team tournaments, and all these other things that will have some economic benefits. It's not gonna bring us a million dollars. It was about $20,000, we figured. But when we add all these other venues, and we can have more activities than we have lodging, and once we throw lodging in there for the college matches, that brings the money in like crazy. So I really appreciate everything that everybody's done. It's a great proposal. I especially like the Green Street thing. I'm a Souther, I'm from the South End, I live down the Plains all my life, and it's so important to get the kids down there to do that. And the bikes and all stuff, I think that's fantastic. They've done a great job raising their money. Appreciate Matt and all the work that you've done with us, and I hope it goes through. Thank you.
My name is Brian MacArthur. My family and I are recent transplants to the Waterville area from very far away. One of the things that brought us to this area was the North Street Recreation Area and the city's investments in recreation areas in general, the trail system, just all the opportunities that there are in this area. So I wanna congratulate the city for the investments that they have made thus far. It is bringing people in, we're evidence of that. I wanna continue to encourage that sort of investment. I think this project looks fantastic. I wanna admit that when I first saw it presented, at least in the newspaper, I did have my reservations. Go running by the soccer facility every day, it's a great open space. We need that kind of green urban space, so to hear it being turned into a parking lot was a major concern. I also think that there's potentially other places that are building, such as a rink, could be placed rather than our open spaces. However, to see in the proposal that there is some green space that is being preserved, I think I can support this. And just encourage the city maybe to consider, considering the green spaces that we do have, those as best we can. It's an easy place to build, but it's maybe not the best place to build.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just one point of clarification on the Pine Ridge facility. It's actually seven soccer fields. There's a couple that are crisscrossing one another. So there will be a full-sized 11 v 11 field in that mix that the high school teams will use, so it's providing a little more opportunity than in the presentation.
Thank you.
Do you wanna let Nancy speak?
Claire?
She's on Zoom.
I didn't see your hand. Yes, please. That's even smaller than Rebecca's hand.
Hi, Nancy Sanford, and I live in Ward One. And I absolutely support investment in recreation for all ages in Waterville. However, I think it's unwise to promise the taxpayers of Waterville that somewhere along the line, taxes might go up to support this. And I say that because we've, I've lived in Waterville for 30, 30-plus years, and we've been told that before on some things that were quote-unquote "not going to cost the taxpayers anything." And then they did. And so, and to Claude's point, TIF money actually is tax money. So, I just think that being promised that our taxes won't go up, and maybe they won't, but I personally think that that's an unwise thing to do when trying to promote something. And that's it.
We appreciate that. I'm not sure anybody promised that taxes wouldn't go up. I'm sure that some people's taxes are gonna go up as soon as we have a reevaluation next year or two, but it won't be due to this project. It may be due to other projects, but if we were gonna spend any general fund money on this project, it wouldn't get my signature. I'm sure it wouldn't get a lot of votes for the people sitting at this table. This one's been vetted pretty well, I think that we're on the right course. It should be good for us. Anyone else?
Hannah Holdenar, I'm a resident of Ward Seven. I figured I'd get up and speak since not many of us often do. I hear Rick is very concerned about the proposal and the price tag that goes along with it, and I absolutely understand that. I also absolutely understand that this is a very well-thought-out proposal, though most of the improvements are not gonna be directly in Ward Seven. The things that are, the investments that are going to be made are for all of Waterville and all of Waterville's youth, and in multiple locations. The fact that it's North Street, the fact that it's over at Pine Ridge, and then also down in our own Green Street Park. Rian and the Friends of Green Street Park have been doing amazing work, and to see us, see that one of our little parks is gonna get, is a part of that plan, is fantastic. This is an investment that needs to happen. It's an investment that is long overdue, especially in, for a lot of areas. So, even though your concerns are heard, Rick, about the price tag, it is, it's a very well-thought-out investment, so...
Anyone else? You've got enough. All right, moving on to council updates. You guys got any updates? All right, well, not a counselor, but I am gonna have one. Counselor Green, thank you again for the help with the proclamation. I actually have a proclamation that should've been done earlier, but I didn't have the paperwork, so we're gonna do it now. If I can find what she sent me, because, you know, right on top of it. I'm downloading it now. There we go. I got it. I need my IT guy, you gonna help me with this?
Hey Jay, while you're downloading, can I give an update real quickly?
Go ahead. Oh, you're muted.
I just wanted to let the council know a couple things related to the brown-tailed moth. And I should've, I should've asked Steve for an update on that issue when he was doing his manager's update. But anyways, the state of Maine has finally officially recognized a state of pub... Oh, we received that on September 23rd. So that, that's, I don't know, good news, but it's certainly progress. And I also wanted to say that if you check your emails, all the city councilors and mayor and the city manager has received a link to a beta version of a survey that is seeking to collect data from residents about trees on their property and potential infestations, and whether they, you know, what any treatment history might be on that, on their property, and whether they are interested in potentially being considered for some sort of assistance in managing the problem. So if you have residents that are contacting you about this, this is the time now when the moths are going to nest. You'll start seeing the nests being built as the leaves come off the trees, these winter nests, that's, these people wanna know what to do. This is the time to, to put their information in that survey, whether they want the city to do anything about it or not, regardless, still giving us the information that these residents have helps us build a better picture of what's actually happening in Waterville. That, when we make sure that the survey is running correctly in this sort of beta phase, I wanna see that survey get mounted on a city website, which was the question I had for the city manager as to what progress had been made on that front. I don't know if he can speak to that now or not, but otherwise, that's all I have to say on the issue for the time being. The next step is gonna be to get, when the leaves finally come off the trees, is gonna be to contract a comprehensive street inventory, street-level survey by a third-party arborist, which will integrate with this residential data that we're gonna, we're getting.
Anything else?
Steve?
Yes. Counselor Klepack, we've been working on that, we haven't made the progress that we had hoped for, but I expect that you're gonna see that mounted on the city's website and in the surrounding area in the next few days and couple of weeks for the other municipalities.
Yeah, that survey is really only for the city of Waterville. It is not, it hasn't been designed, it doesn't have streets that correspond, the way we've put together the data collection, it's not, that survey is not actually for the other municipalities. If that's something that we want, we can do that, but I don't, I don't have that built.
Actually, I went beyond your question because there was information that we had told the other municipalities we would share with them so that they could use it in their communities, and that's part of the answer I was giving you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I'll say Klepack?
I'm good.
All right. So I'm gonna read this off. Again, Rebecca, thank you for... Let's go. Whereas the state of Maine officially recognized the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day to honor the culture and history... Oh yeah, I should've practiced this. Passama'kuti? There you go. Me, Cam, Manasits, and Penobscot tribes, known as the Wabanaki and the people of the Don. Whereas the people of the Don inhabited this land long before Europeans came to colonize it. Whereas history books are typically written by the Vandar history to include those who were integral parts of creating the history that we have. Whereas the people of the Don have provided many resources by which we can learn that history, including wabanakialliance.com, Wabanaki Reach, and others. Whereas Waterville was first known by the name Teconic, as the indigenous inhabitants called it. Therefore, be it resolved that I, J. Quell, mayor of the city of Waterville, urge the people of Waterville on the upcoming Indigenous Peoples' Day and throughout the year to explore our common history and deepen our understanding of the Wabanaki people and who, those who lived here and come on this land for centuries before us. And come to act in accordance with sentiments set out by Penobscot Nation member Stephanie Francis, whose words said, "The earth is our great mother. We treat the earth as sacred. Nobody owns the earth. Everything we need, we get from the earth. Food, water, seeds for planting. We think of the earth as our great mother. The earth is our mother. The earth is our home." And that is it. Thanks again, Rebecca. Anybody else have anything? All right, well, I actually have something else that has nothing to do with this. I'm gonna go before Community Notes. Been a lot of vandalism down at the River Walk. I'll be right with you, Claude. Over the past week, we've had benches thrown into the river, graffiti down by the amphitheater. I think that whoever's doing that should be ashamed. Our community has come together to give us a beautiful green space and spaces to walk, and we really don't need people going down and destroying what we have built so that the rest of us can enjoy. If you have to be destructive, go home. Most of the people that we arrest in this city don't even belong in Waterville. You come from other areas, and our residents don't typically care for that. I will say that there's been a string of break-ins in different neighborhoods. I don't know if any of you have missed change or cups or anything else out of your cup holders, but I wanna remind people that although Waterville is a pretty liberal town, a lot of us have guns. And if you walk onto our property, you are doing so at your own risk. That is all I got. Anyone else? Let's go to Community Notes.
Are you familiar with what's going on on TikTok, the challenges that are happening? Have you heard about that yet?
I have TikTok, I'm not 13-year-old, I mean...
Neither am I, but it came from a principal from the high school, and every month, students are challenged to do something, whether it's in the community or in the building.
Well, if any of those students are my kids, they better hope they don't come home.
That might be a positive, I'm not sure.
It may be, but I feel like junior high and high school kids aren't throwing a bench into the river. Half of them can't lift it. Anybody else? All right, Community Notes. Oh, go ahead, Claude, I keep seeing your hand, go ahead, buddy.
Okay, can I...
I try not to, I promise. It's hard to see that screen.
I just want to reiterate what I have been saying for some time now. Please, everyone, go out and get vaccinated. It's free, and it is actually the only way we're ever going to get past the damn pandemic, pardon my French. But please, it's free.
to get past the damn pandemic. Pardon my French. But please, it's free. It makes everybody healthier. Thank you.
Councillor Voss? I will go on with that and advise people to go talk to your doctor. Don't listen to a politician. That's all I got to say. All right. Community Notes. Yes, please. I mean, if you're comfortable with it, I'm good.
Well, we sent in these questions yesterday, but they weren't all answered. So I just wanted to make sure we got them on, on the record. But I also want to get on the record that your statement warning people that, you know, we have guns really makes me sick to my stomach.
I know, but we do.
Well, that's just great. And it's so great you all think it's funny that someone would be troubled by a statement like that. Actually, I think I'm going to sit down.
All right. Well, my name's Ashley Heber. I work in the Waterville area. I was born and raised here. Unfortunately, currently can't afford to live in Waterville. However, I'd love to move back sometime. So I just wanted to ask a few questions. The first one, I just wanted to ask, has a date been set for the Housing Committee conference? And has the location been determined at all? And will it be open to the public? And will the public be notified about those meetings? That was really the first question. So I, I don't know how many I'm allowed to ask. There are quite a few, so I'll probably trim them down.
I'm going to go to Rebecca because she's on the Housing Committee.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Jay. I'd be happy to answer those questions. So first of all, this absolutely is a conference that's open to the public. In fact, we would like to see anyone who's interested at all in housing to show up and join this conversation. The details are being finalized, so I'm not going to, I don't have a definitive answer to the date. We're looking at sometime early in December. And the venue is, we're, we're looking at the Elm as, as a venue. But I do want to stress that those are, those details are not finalized. But certainly, the public is, will be welcome. That's the whole point of this, is to open up the conversation. And this is about housing across the board in Waterville at all income levels and all neighborhoods. So something for everyone, as it were. And part of the point of this is to come together and show how all of the elements that were faced, all of the housing issues we're faced with in Waterville actually do intersect and to tackle it as a community. So thank you. And I hope, stay tuned for further information. I, I hope to see many, many of you there.
Thank you. Awesome. And then I'll just, I'll ask a few of the shorter questions because I don't want to keep everyone too, too long.
I'm not going to cut you off. I didn't even set a timer. You go ahead.
All right. I just, I also wanted to know if there were any additional plans to what's happening with the Sacred Heart Church property. I've been attending the last few meetings. I haven't heard of anything going on. So I just wanted to ask if, you know, if it's still for sale or if it has been sold, and if there are any plans that have been kind of discussed since the last meeting.
It's currently still for sale. I think they're still under contract. Nothing has been determined there yet.
Okay. Good to know. Okay. And then I also just wanted to know, so for the ARPA Committee itself, how does the committee plan on fulfilling the goal of providing relief to those who are most impacted by COVID, and specifically laying the foundation for a strong and equitable economic recovery in Waterville, while also serving the Waterville Comprehensive Plan, particularly to create a strong and healthy neighborhood system?
I think Steve touched on some of that. We're trying to get some money from the county and the committee, who should meet in the next couple of weeks. So I'd come back with that question because we'll have some more solid information for you.
Okay, sounds good. I'll keep attending. That was all the questions I had for tonight.
I did too. You made it sound like...
I know. I just, I know it's the end of the night. So, thank you.
Anyone else? I think that's a motion to adjourn. Do we get a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, Thomas. Thank you.